Joining us for our special public hearing board meeting this evening. We will go ahead and get started if Ms. Lewis, if you could, call the role, please.
Yes, Dr. Flores?
President.
Ms. Grant, excuse, Ms. Lewis is here. Reverend Matthias is excused. Ms. Shatky?
Here.
Mrs. Williams is excused. Dr. Baker?
He just stepped out to the restroom.
I thought I saw him, okay. Ms. Davis?
Here.
President Ross?
So we have one special order of business for this public hearing. That's the facilities master plan recommendations. If we have any public comment on this, we'll have that afterwards. And of course, we'll have a public comment for our next standard meeting at 6:30 for those who are interested. But until then, Dr. Roby?
All right, so good evening, everyone. This is the overview of the year-long process that we've undertaken over since the beginning of 2022 related to our facilities master plan. And what I will do is just give a brief introduction and then share the seven recommendations that the board has, would like to move forward as part of policy as we move into 2023. And so just very briefly, this facility master plan is aligned to our district strategic plan. We have included the voice of our board, our district and school leadership. We've had intentional gatherings with our scholars. We had over 6,000 participants who have participated either through lunch and learn, surveys, small focus groups, other kind of activities to involve and engage voice. There have been approximately 40 different meetings. And then our board has undertaken the role of several different work sessions as well as retreats to dive into our district data for making sure that we are collecting voice to move forward. So under the board recommendations, there are seven of them. The first is under Phase One, which is considered the impact to ensure that we support and provide environments that allow our scholars and staff to excel. And this is in alignment with our strategic plan. Recommendation number one is to ensure sustainability that aligns with our district's strategic plan by aiming for an average of 75% utilization across the district with a special emphasis on our elementary and middle school grade programs by 2032. And recommendation number two, enrollments and utilization rates will be assessed annually to ensure facilities master plan, strategic plan, and academic plan implementations are improving measurable strategic outcomes. And this is done in conjunction with our defined pre-K through 12 continuum related to the development, training, and PD for our schools, outlining this work collectively and collaboratively with our teaching and learning department, our building principals, and teaching staff. There were a total of three, or excuse me, there were a total of 10 guiding principles that our district decided to use with the top three being equitable scholar voice, which aligns to strategic plan theme one and five, creating new and improved scholar opportunities, which is aligned to strategic theme four, one and two, invest in spaces and environment and culture to strengthen the teaching and learning, which is aligned to strategic plan three and six. Under Impact, recommendations three and four by our board, relocation of scholars and staff will be implemented to preserve programs, prioritize equitable access, and improve learning environments for all of our schools. Recommendation number four, be responsive and transparent to our community, with our community, excuse me, by producing a facilities master plan calendar that includes continual stakeholder engagement and communication milestones on a regular basis. And simply what that means is that if this board decides to move these forward, we'll make sure in 2023, there's also a timeline that's available for our community so that people will know when to expect what information. Strategic, Phase Two, which is invest, and this is specifically looking at how are we investing in our school properties? And this is recommendation number five, which is to provide a continuation of funding of implementation of our master plan through a capital campaign that will be initiated in November of 2023. And simply put, excuse me, this is what we are planning on doing is asking our community for a no tax rate increase. And more information will be available about that in the upcoming school year, or excuse me, upcoming year, 2023. Under Phase Three, which is innovate, and this is making sure that we're using our district resources by seeking out partnerships for vacated schools or sites that were, and using those programs in a new way. And then also, one of the things that we want to highlight is that in the partnerships, GRPS would prioritize the property ownership with future asset decisions. And so if you look to your right, based around this survey data, how our community has responded to how we should be using property mill. I'm sorry, I think I was pressing my, my watch. Kind of scared myself. How we should be using our properties and affordable housing, parks, green spaces, were the things that kind of rose to the top, but also there was conversations and feedback around staff housing and then other ways to be creative with our facilities. Recommendation number seven, which goes under sustain, is to reduce current operating costs and resource inefficiencies by leveling Kensington and reducing some fiscal, financial responsibilities for Alexander during the 2023 school year. The primary reduction strategy is establishing an agreement that absolves our district from property maintenance costs, but maintains ownership for future asset decisions. And so this goes under our strategic theme of creating a trust of culture, collaboration, and stewardship. Now, related to this, the next couple of slides are kind of a generic timeline of what you can expect to see over the next 12, 12 months. Obviously, there will be some details layered in that if this recommendation, these recommendations are approved by our board. And so just very simply, a review of the facility master plan, what we're doing now. Also, this is an opportunity for public input for folks who would like to offer feedback or raise questions. And then also during this time, we've completed our first round of stakeholder engagement. The goal is to approve the seven recommendations in the December 5th board meeting. And then as we roll into 2023, our work would be round two of stakeholder engagement with visioning of what that looks like based around those seven areas. And then often offering our stakeholders an opportunity to offer feedback. And then that's also the time that schools actually would be named that have the direct impact. In spring and summer of 2023, the implementation you'll start to see, and then also kind of defining the educational, financial, and operational approach. And while this is going on, also, we are doing our educational realignment around our facilities because as we've shared with our community, this is not just solely about closing of program, closing of buildings, it's about how do we make sure that we uplift our curricular approach and making sure that all schools are a viable option? And then also, that's where the discussion of facilities that will remain and then what do we need to repurpose? In the spring and summer of 2023, again, we talked about publicly announcing the schools. And then with those schools that have, will be directly impacted, doing a round three of stakeholder engagement so that those families and scholars and staff know exactly what to expect and how that work will be supported. Late summer is when we would have to decide if there would be a ballot proposal related to the no tax, no new tax rate increase. The deadline for submission is mid-August. And then fall and winter, that would include additional stakeholder engagement, including things such as learning labs, and then discussing, discussing the transition plans for those realigned schools. And then November of 2023 is when we would ask our voters to decide if they are in support of that. Long range, going into '24 through 2032, if the success, if the voters do approve and we are successful, then we would go into 2024, '25 school year, working very closely with those schools and making sure that different things were in place around engagement and school designs, transitioning programs, architectural renderings. Summer of 2024 includes more engagement with stakeholder input and open houses and tours. We would expect that renovations for any existing programs would begin summer of 2025. And because of the footprint in our district, we anticipate that this would last about four years. And then 20, between now and 2032, which is a nine-year range, to continually make sure that we are looking at our timeline, looking to see, are we meeting those goals related to the 75% utilization and other things that we've outlined previously? And so that is the quick version of that. And what we're asking at this point is, as the public is hearing this, and I know that they've heard it a couple of times as we've gone through town halls, to offer an opportunity to offer feedback related to the plan either tonight, and then also we invite them if there are things that they think of later. Because oftentimes, once people hear conversations and things, they have ideas and things that they may consider for later reflections, to also contact us using our district website or to email us at myschools@grps.org. And so that concludes kind of the overview related to the facilities master plan, including the seven recommendations that this board has brought forward for consideration.
All right, thank you very much for that overview. You know, since this session is specifically a public hearing, we'll move straight to some of the comment cards. We have several people who would like to make comment in regards to the cities' master plan. So just as a reminder, though, our public comments are limited to three minutes. I will call folks down if you can just maybe have a seat here in the front row and come up to the table when your name is called, though. We do have Brett Graham, Jeremiah Moran, and Daniel Allen Schut, I believe this is. If, if either one of you want to come to the table, and the other two can just stand in front row there and be eager to hear your commentary. Oh, step up someone.
I'll jump in.
Yeah, so just to give us your name, please, so we know who we're.
My name is Brett Graham. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you board candidate, or board members for what you've done. I've been a candidate this year and brand-new respect and appreciation for everything you guys have done. Some of you for over a decade and the challenges and successes have been good. And good luck to the, the future members coming. And thank you for those that are stepping away and now into the next stages of life. President Ross, Dr. Roby, Board and Directors. While I appreciate your swift action on this matter, I call some serious concerns about the process. I'm no stranger to the speed at which the district works on projects from the grassroots level. I'm concerned in the process to the swift decision to start demolishing structures. There are some news releases already put out saying that there's a vote ready to be placed for demolishing a few buildings. And yes, you guys did hold the public meetings. I attended. I just, again, I'm concerned that in a matter of weeks, we went from ambiguity on the strategic plan, process of handling facilities, to swift action of holding a formal vote to demolishing. What I saw was Kensington, Alexander Elementary's, and Adelante High with possibly more ready to follow. The history shows that a playground can't be managed from concept to construction in four years. Facilities management can't repair HVAC systems, even though I've been told that they're fully good to go. Our school is still struggling with variable temperatures in the, in the classrooms, in the 90s for some, in the 60s for others. And it, and it varies from room to, the same room can have variable temperatures every day. Prior to most of you, the, the members on the board, GRPS had the foresight to sell off the fleet of buses and hire a busing system to drive our children around and not succeed at delivering our children to their destinations on time at reasonable hours or even sometimes to the proper destinations. While that was a previous regime, you have continued to cart along Dean Transportation and not hold them accountable for some of the delinquencies right now. While I agree with some of the remarks about the fiscal responsibility on the buildings, I don't agree with a voice that didn't want public opinion in the opportunity to fully see this master plan through at all levels of the process in full transparency. Again, a precedent is about to be set on how this goes through. And it was desired to just not bring the, the public in for, or it was stated in one of the press releases that it was not desirable for the public to be in on the decision process, which is atrocious, in my opinion. We wanted to have the transparency, it was stated from GRPS that that's how it was going to go. It's obvious that the body of GRPS and the community desire to have honesty, integrity, accountability, transparency, and leadership willing to stand strong for them even when it puts processes on hold for a short time. I've waited four years in our playground process. I and I assume others expect a reciprocated mindset out of each and every one of you at Franklin, each of you sitting on this board in front of us, and also the newly elected board members. I'm concerned with this first handling of the facilities plan and the attempt to aggressively push Step One into fruition quietly and without bringing us the family of GRPS fully along in this pilot project.
Thank you, sir. Perfect timing. Excuse me, thank you very much, Mr. Graham. Jeremiah Moran? Hope I'm pronouncing that correctly.
You got it. It wasn't moron. Thank you guys so much. This is my first time ever speaking at any kind of board meeting with GRPS. Myself being a kid attending GRPS schools, gone to 13 different schools. I am the youth that live in the Black Hills community and the Roosevelt Park neighborhood. I'm a pastor in this community. I'm with Grand Rapids First, I'm the community outreach pastor there, more specifically in these communities. My wife and I moved into the Black Hills 15 years ago to serve this community. In the back of Kensington, I have nothing rehearsed, I don't have no notes, anything like that. So thank you guys for bearing with me. We've mentored so many young people in this community. Our heart is for these children and these families. So to have ours on end, my daughters being two, three years old, playing basketball in the back of Kensington Elementary, in fact, there were no basketball lines, no three-point line, no anything. I, I seen a group miss, I don't know how to pronounce your last name.
Shatky.
I seen you there, and I told you guys that, I said, hey, please forgive me, because I, we drew yellow lines on that basketball court as we were playing basketball with some of the young men and some of the young ladies. And so serving this community, I read about the building being demolished. And my mind went back to these stories of these young people in this community. Our heart at our church is when we see a need, we step into it and fill it with no strings attached. And so what we're already doing in the community, heavily involved at Sessa Chavez Southwest Community Campus as community partners, KSSN. And so when we, when I read about it being demolished, I thought to myself, while we're already doing things in the community, this building could really increase the capacity for us to serve the families and the children of this community. And so I know it's a cost. I know it costs money to maintain this facility, the grounds of this facility. But instead of demolishing it, give it to us. We'll use it. We won't use it for any financial gain. We'll use it to serve the families and the kids of this community. Well, I have a document that I'm ready to send to you of how we would use it, what we're already doing and what we would step into doing and using this facility to serve the families and the kids of our community. Myself, I got a young man with me, he's one of my leaders here in the community. He's from this community. And to know, if anyone knows the children of this community, we know all too well what they're going through, the struggles they face, and what they need. Myself, I went to 13 different schools, grew up in shelters. I mean, I've, just to give you an idea, I've been to Aberdeen, Sigsbee when it was there, Shawnee Park, Harrison Park, Stocking. I mean, you guys could probably go back in records and see all the schools I've gone to. We moved around so, so much, the transient, you know, community and low income and the poverty rate being so low. We're ready to step in and serve these families. And so my request is, don't tear this building down. You want to get rid of it by demolishing it? Get rid of it by giving it to us.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moran.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you. Daniel Schut, I believe, and as he makes his way to the table, Erica Lozano Bull, and Peter Scudder, and Jesse Mdenhill, maybe make your way to the front. Daniel Schut?
I just wanted to clarify, is this just concerning facilities?
Feel free to speak to whatever you like to speak to, sir. You have three minutes. No? I've been redirected, not the first or last time, I probably will be.
Say that again.
I've been redirected, I, I answered incorrectly. Public comment for items that are not facilities-related will be part of our next meeting at 6:30.
Okay.
Yeah.
I probably should wait till then.
Yeah, thank you for your patience, and my apology.
No problem.
Erica Lozano Bull, am I saying that correctly?
You got it right, the first time it was bull, but the second time you got it right, nice job, thank you. Hi, good evening. I saw some of you last week at a meeting I came to and was not 100% prepared because it was a little bit crazy for me that day. So I'm glad you're having this meeting tonight, and I can talk to you a little bit about my thoughts on this process. It was very helpful for me to hear about the community engagement results, I think. I, I think I would agree that the speed of the process was, it was very fast. And I, I think that was really hard for the community. I think when you're talking about community engagement, the first time I heard about it was August, was the Plant Moran Report. And then the next thing I knew, we were in the middle of town halls and surveys. And now we're here tonight, and then I believe there's supposed to be a vote on December 5th. That's pretty fast, especially for families that are coming off summer, starting school. And we're still dealing with the pandemic despite, you know, the fact that a lot of people act like we're not. So I, I'm concerned about the demographics of the responses when I heard what they were. So I just wanted to put that out there first. I spent some time reading through a lot of the materials, and I, I looked for the Plant Moran Report or any kind of summary of that and could not find anything. So in terms of having adequate information as a community member, I feel like that's a real failure. That report would have been really helpful for me to have a better understanding of what exactly does it mean? I, I see 50% of schools are at or over 50% capacity. Was that based on individual schools and which schools were those? Was it overall, because I understand that it was matched to the Michigan State recommended levels? You know, what exactly do we mean when we say excess space? I mean, my child's a public school child, and I don't see a lot of excess space in our school. That doesn't mean it doesn't exist, but it would be really helpful for me to, to get some sort of example. What does that mean? We have schools where 25 classrooms are under, whatever that means. It, it's unclear to me as a community member what that means. A million square feet are not fully utilized. What does fully utilized mean? Does it mean it's being used eight hours a day? Does it mean the number of students that are being used by it? Does it mean it's being used for education? What does that mean? There is no clarity for me within those terms or within those phrases. And then there was things like the discussion of staffing, you know, the one custodian per school, which, I mean, that's abysmal. But would adequate staffing be guaranteed as part of this plan? I mean, we're bringing it into this, so is, is it actually going to be resolved as a result of this? You know, 200 to 300 vacant positions, but is that based on having too many facilities? Or is it not competitive enough salaries and a difficult hiring process? We're tying things into this process that I, I understand are tangential but are not necessarily the underpinnings of what a facility master plan is for. So those are some of my, you know, the, the lower birth rates. Yeah, there's lower birth rates across the country. We also have families moving into Grand Rapids all the time despite it, in fact, exacerbating the affordable housing crisis. You know, we actually came from the West Coast to move here for family reasons, but that gave us more spending power to buy a home. And I live in a community where there's a lot of older people, and those homes are turning over into younger people. I live in Ottawa Hills, so basically across the street. What should have been my community school was sold to Grand Rapids Christians. So we'll never have that walk, you know, we can't, we'd have to walk across Franklin, which, you know, it takes five to seven cars sometimes just to get across the street here. I, I can't trust that for my kid.
Wind your comments up, please.
Yeah, sure. So I, I just really want us to be thinking about what this means. I'm glad we're prioritizing ownership, but I'd rather see a guarantee than a prioritization. And then I also wanted to say, you know, COVID mitigation needs to be a really big part of anything that's funded, and that shouldn't have to wait for this, and neither should things like AC for kids who are sweltering in schools. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you very much. Peter Scudder, hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, and Jesse Mdenhill. Peter?
Thank you.
Is it, is it, is it Scudder?
Scudder.
Thank you.
Thanks. Like Mr. Moran, I'm a first-time participant in this meeting and did not come with an extensive list of comments, but so I'll keep it relatively brief. I'm here in short to speak in opposition to the demolition of Kensington Building. I believe there are several opportunities for the building to be repurposed and to contribute to the community. I specifically work with a housing group called Impact Credit Partners. We're associated to Einhorn, which is a real estate development group. We often see and work with developers on helping them with monetizing historic tax credits on historically significant buildings. If you guys have seen pictures of the building, it's definitely historically significant. There's a great deal of beautiful architectural design that adds to that community. There are several great examples of nonprofits within the greater Grand Rapids area. They have taken old schools and used them for great purposes, such as addressing affordable housing. I think it would be, it would be smart for the group to look for a potential partner that could take on the financial burden of repurposing that building and maybe taking on, as you guys mentioned, in a couple parts, your proposal four as developing timelines, and then assess under proposal six, potential to repurpose the building that's something that fits the community's need as opposed to demolition. So that's pretty much it.
Thank you very much. And our last comment, Jesse Mdenhill?
I'm a little nervous. But yes, my name is Jesse Mdenhill. I am a parent of a first grader at CA Frost Elementary. And I also have a younger daughter who hopefully will be a GRPS student soon. I first heard about this this late summer as well, this, this whole facilities master's plan. And I just have to say, it was, it was, it gave me a lot of anxiety, actually, and, you know, and I am sure it did many parents throughout the city of just, you know, how is this going to impact my kid? And, and, you know, everything from our commute to our, you know, just her daily life. And I know I'm not the only parent. So I do hope that, you know, the transparency through this process is, continues to be well. And I did want to say too, though, like, I know, you know, I don't like, you know, it is, it's always sad to hear about buildings we're not using. But I do also hope that we, I do, I actually appreciate that the focus, the first steps are buildings that are not in use by students right now. And I think that is, needs to be important. And I would even go extend that, I know, I, you know, forgive me, I don't know exactly every single thing that happens at every building, but I know I pass Beckwith a lot and GRPS University, and I don't know if things like that can be combined and stuff as well. And just anything to try to limit the amount of actual schools in use being shut down would be something that I would appreciate, and I think many parent, current parents would as well. And, sorry, I tried to keep my notes. The other thing though, too, though, is I, is, I went to some of the, one of the townhouses too, you know, because I was so frustrated. And, you know, I hear about the birth rates going down, but I also get frustrated because there are so many people in this community that do not send their kids, that have kids, that do not send their kids to GRPS. And I find that disheartening and frustrating, and even some of the comments they give me to throw out sending my kids to GRPS are like, how could you do that? And so as much as that frustrates me, I also think that in some ways, this facilities plan, I hope that it is an opportunity to, I know, you know, my daughter's school actually does, has a waitlist. And like, I, I want all schools to be like that. I want every, I don't want any parent to, you know, I've talked to a parent who was worried about it, you know, just recently, and I, you know, no parent should ever have to worry about what school they go to. And I hope that some of these funds can be used to improve our schools and, you know, maybe increase opportunities. I know a couple of weeks ago, I saw at the, when they first introduced the, a couple of weeks ago, they said something, and this was something I put in my survey as well, is like a Young Fives program. I just mentioned that younger daughter, you know, she, okay.
I'll finish it.
Yeah, it's a Young Fives program, and I, I think that would be a great way to engage more students. I know I'm having to look at a district for that right now. And, you know, that's And, you know, that's something I think that if you start them young, they're going to, they're more likely to stay. And I know we have the Great Start Writing this, which is great, but it's, you know, I think the Young Fives would be an additional program that could get more families in the door. And finally, I just, I know I don't have the time, but I just want to say, I think you guys are doing great with my daughter. She comes home every day. She actually tells me what she does. You know, she was just telling me and my mom last night about her math strategies. Like, you guys are doing great, and I really want that for every student at GRPS.
Great. Thank you very much. These are the last of the comment cards. Do we have anyone else in the audience who wanted to speak, whose maybe card we don't have? Being none, just wanted to be certain. Well, I guess really the intent of this evening's meeting was to provide this final overview. As, as it was mentioned, we do plan to vote December fifth. As Dr. Roby mentioned, there is opportunity to send continued comments at the, to the GRPS email, or of course, the emails of all the board members are available on the website as well, if you want to share anything. Otherwise, of course, we will continue to deliberate and discuss, and we will be coming forth with a vote on this on December fifth. Not going to say whether or not there will be edits based on what we've heard this evening, but we definitely have, have listened intently. There, there may be, but it's definitely not for me to say at this point whether it will or won't. But again, December fifth will be the day that we'll bring these recommendations for a final vote. And I guess unless any of my board colleagues have anything they would like to offer in regards to this special hearing, I will adjourn the meeting. But before we do that, just wanted to check and see if anyone, well, any closing comments from you and the Dr. Roby? Okay, well, thank you very much, folks. We will have our standard board meeting in about twenty-five minutes here, six-thirty. If anyone wants to stick around, please feel free. Thank you for your time and attention.